Call this meeting of the Harriman City Council, August 21st, 2018 order. Before we get started, we'll have a prayer and then pledge allegiance to the flag. Here tonight to do our prayer for us, Charlie Jones, which is the owner of Sears here in Harriman, and he is also on our utility board. I want to thank Charlie for coming to do our prayer tonight.
Father, we do thank you, Lord, for this opportunity we have here tonight. What I pray, Lord, that you will be with the mayor and the councilman each one of them, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for them, giving their title, Lord, and I pray, Lord, you give them wisdom that they make the decisions, Lord, working for the city of Harriman. I pray, Lord, you be with each one of them and their families, Lord. We just pray, Lord, that you'll be at this meeting tonight. We do thank you, Lord, for our city with our police department, a fire department, each one of them, Lord, Jesus, what they do, I pray, that they always look over and protect them, Lord. And pray, Lord, that we always remember our help coming from the Lord. We pray, Lord, tonight, that we'll always thank you and as these thank you to your precious name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, through the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro.
Call her up, please.
Chris Sager?
Here.
Betty Holly?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Keny Mee?
Here.
Sam Russell?
Here.
Monty Wright?
Fire form, in motion to approve minutes of the August 7th, 2018 meeting.
Motion.
Motion to councilman Holly.
Second.
Second to councilman me, councilman Holly. Councilman me.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion, minutes corrections. Call her up, please.
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Motion carries. Need a motion to pay the bills?
Motion.
Motion to councilman Russell.
Second.
Second to councilman Ayler, councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ayler.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Motion carries. This time, we'll hear from the delegation if you'd like to address council. Please stand, state your comments, and limit them to three minutes.
I'm always quarter, I'm on Cumberland Street, and I'm of course with Cornstalk Heights Historical Organization, and I just want you all to know that we're having our community picnic, Sunday, September the 9th, at 4:00 P.M. And this is, we would love to extend an invitation for any of the council members, any of the directors of the chiefess, an opportunity to meet the citizens of Cornstalk Heights. So that's an invitation to you, and if anyone can make it, we'd love to have it. We're doing a dish to pass, and we'll provide the main place.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm still on the agenda, 2:54 morning, but I never have found out what we've done about the TV station, you know? I knew they took it back down there, and I thought you were going to meet with them. I don't go about being here. We had it here, but I thought they just ended up moving.
Me and Kevin did meet with Dr. Layla down there and discussed the TV station, that's been some time back, and they moved that class back down to Rome State. We can bring the TV station back, the only thing is, we can't manage, and they do it down there, and he's going to do some more checking on the city, I think, is what, is that kind of way we're left to see exactly what. But I guess until the council decides that they want to run a TV station, I don't know what we can do.
Well, we can pull the TV station thing, but this is Harriman, it's not Rome State.
And we can do that. Council can, if they decide to do that, they have all rights to do that.
Anyone else?
I just want to remind everybody, since this is the last council meeting before, Hooray for Harriman is on September the 3rd coming up, and it'll be our 30th anniversary, so I really hope everybody's planning on attending. I'm hoping we'll have a big turnout. We've extended the vendor deadline until the 23rd. I'd really love to get about 80 vendors this year. We had about 75, I think, last year, so I think that's an attainable goal. So it'll be September the 3rd, 9:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M., downtown Harriman.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council? No, we're going to council remarks, councilman Russell.
I have a few things, Mayor. I've noticed on Pine Ridge Road that all of our drain grates are busted or busting, and I'm pretty sure that's the state's responsibility to fix, or is it our responsibility since we took that deal with the state?
It's the state's responsibility to repair. That was something we discussed with them before we entered into the contract, because they were damaged before we entered into them, and so they said it was their responsibility to repair. We have discussed it with them on several occasions.
Is there a way we can get in touch with them, maybe have a meeting with them or something to? It's going to cause an accident. It's going to cause somebody to get hurt if we don't get it fixed.
Did you hear the man from there?
He said he shouldn't take this. Other thing I have is, where are we at on our interstate cleanup and signage down there, at the interstate exit, on Restaurant Road?
We have a detailed diagram of the sign, which can be used to manufacture it by. The information on it is part of the permanent package that's being submitted to T-Di, in conjunction with the Roman lines and property, all going in at one time for approval.
Okay. And our cleanup's a part of that?
Yes.
Draw him there. Thanks, sir. Councilman Johnson.
Just, Kevin, do we have an ordinance on people if they leave their trash cans sitting out by the road? Does it have to be framed in as far as keeping them from getting out in the road if the wind blows and stuff?
I'd have to look at the ordinance and see, I'm not sure.
Where I live...
Sometimes it's common to do that in the ordinance, but not always, so I would need to look at ours specifically.
I think I just got with David on this about a month and a half ago, and saw an issue with garbage cans, and I think he looked it up, and I don't think we have anything on it.
To the best of my reading of the ordinance, no, it mentions nothing of such that we're required.
We're going to have to do something, because up there where I live, on the other end, there's a full can that sits out there, and when the wind blows, and twice, I think that emergency people come up there to, for a response on 911, and the cans are out in the road, and they had to get out and move the trash cans to get up the hill.
Well, now, there is an ordinance on that, that they're supposed to be removed by sunset of the day that the trash gets up.
They're not. They sit out there constantly, right by the road. There's nothing holding them or anything. But I'll get with you and show you what's up, because it's causing a big issue up there.
Is it by your house?
Right down on the other end. If you go straight past mine and start down the hill, you'll see them sitting there. That's all I've got.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Ayler.
I just want to say, this is my final meeting as a Harriman City Council, but it's been an honor to work with all of you guys, and I'm very proud of the work that we've done on this council and the previous councils, and I wish you guys the best. I am more optimistic about Harriman than I ever have been. I really like the direction that things are going, and it's just been an incredible experience.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Johnson.
The only thing I have is, I'd like to thank the Russell family, the flagpole that was put down to fall in memory of Dole. It means a lot, and it looks good there. Billy Joe, you've done a good job standing on top of that and putting the plaque on it, but I want to thank the family for the flagpole that is down there on the final memorial. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you. Before I move to new business, you know anything about the county clerk?
New business. First item, discuss and possibly approve first reading of ordinance 08-18-01, an ordinance that the city of Harriman, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019. Dr. Currie?
Okay, this is ordinance number 08-18-01, whereas Tennessee Code Annotated Title IX, Chapter 1, Section 116 requires that all funds of the state of Tennessee and all of its political subdivisions shall first be appropriated before being expended, and that all only funds that are available shall be appropriated. And the Municipal Budget Law of 1982 requires that the governing body of each municipality adopt and operate under an annual budget ordinance, presenting a financial plan with at least the information required by the state statute that no municipality may exceed monies regardless of the source, expended monies regardless of the source, except in accordance with the budget ordinance, and that the governing body shall not make appropriation in excess of estimated available funds. Whereas the governing body has published the annual operating budget and budgetary comparison of the proposed budget with the prior year actual, current year estimated, and a newspaper of general circulation on less than 10 days prior to the meeting, when the governing body will consider final passage of the budget. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Harriman, Tennessee, as follows. Revenues for the general fund will be, are estimated to be $11,851,283. We have a fund balance of $2,521,309, for a total available fund of $14,372,592. The debt service fund has a total available fund of $447,887. Drug fund has a total available funds of $23,170. Solid Waste Management Fund will have total funds available of $420,444. State Street Aid Fund will have total funds available of $380,291. And the Capital Project Fund will have total funds available of $200,000. Section 2, that the governing body appropriates from these anticipated revenues and unexpended and unencumbered funds as follows. General fund expenditures are proposed to be $11,689,514. The debt service fund is expected to have expenses of $421,927. Drug fund has total appropriations of $23,170. Solid Waste Management Fund has total appropriations of $362,93. State Street Aid Fund has appropriations of $380,291. Capital Project Fund has no planned expenditures in FY 2019. Section 3, at the end of the fiscal year FY 19, the governing body estimates ending balances as follows. General fund balance will be $2,683,077.61. Debt service fund, $25,959. Solid Waste Management Fund, $58,351. Capital Project Fund, $200,000. Total hall fund balances, $2,967,387.61. Section 4, that the governing body recognizes that municipality has payments for notes and leases for governmental activities as follows. Monetized debt in this notes will be, debt redemption will be $335,271. Interest requirements will be $86,656. Capital leases, we have debt redemption of $30,738. Interest requirements, $5,629. Section 5, no appropriation listed above may be exceeded without an amendment of the budget ordinance as required by the municipal budget law of 1982, TCA. Section 6, it's 6-208. In addition, no appropriation may be made in excess of available funds, except to provide for an actual emergency threatening health, property, and lives of inhabitants of the municipality, and declared by two-thirds of the vote to release the quorum of the governing body in accordance with Section 6-56-205, Tennessee Code Annotated. Section 6, money may be transferred or run appropriation to another in the same fund only by appropriate ordinance by the governing body, subject to such limitations and procedures as may be made described as allowed by Section 6-56-209, of Tennessee Code. Any resulting transfers may be reported to the governing body at its next regular meeting and entered through the minutes. Section 7, a detailed item of budget financial plans shall be prepared in support of the ordinance. The detailed budgets shall be used as guidance and generally followed in implementing this ordinance. Section 8, if for any reason a budget ordinance is not adopted prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year, the appropriations in this budget ordinance shall become the appropriations for the next fiscal year until the adoption of a new budget ordinance in accordance with Section 6-56-210, Tennessee Code, provided sufficient revenues are being collected to support the continuing appropriation. Section 9, there is hereby levied a property tax of $1.22 per $100 of assessment value on all real and personal property for the purposes of funding municipal services. Until adequate funds have been allocated to meet FY 19 debt payments, the property tax shall be prorated as follows. The general fund will receive $0.8673, and the debt service fund will receive $0.3527 for a total of $1.22. There is hereby provided a donation to the Henry Stafford East Tennessee Agricultural Expedition Center, located at Rome State Community College. The periodic contribution shall be calculated at a rate of 28.57% of actual hotel motel occupancy tax receipts, and be limited in application to not exceed $50,000 total donation for FY 19. Section 11, there is hereby provided the transfer of $100,000 to the Capital Project Fund to provide a capital equipment reserve. All unencumbered balances of appropriations remaining at the end of the fiscal year shall lapse and revert to the respective fund balances. Section 13, wage and salary adjustments shall take effect retroactively to July 1, 2018, but not prior to second reading and final passage of this ordinance. Section 14, this ordinance shall take effect July 1, 2018, political welfare requiring it, passed on first reading. This is 21st day of August, 2018, and second reading will be entered in after second reading. Wayne B. S. Mayor, Resurrection City Clerk.
Mr. Goodrude. First my councilman Holly, second. Second, councilman Johnson, councilman Holly. Councilman Johnson. Yes, sir. Floor is open for discussion on the budget. Any tax increases?
Taxes, yes.
So any changes that happen between the annual report or...
Look forward to this.
So how we going to let Evan and then present it at the next meeting?
We can do it kind of however, councilman, we can have a, we can get to Kevin, and we can have a workshop prior to the meeting, or we can go and then we discuss it, councilman. I'm sure we can, councilman Russell.
I normally, there's always a few little changes after everything, but it's...
And what we do is, is okay, we'll kind of monitor what we're getting on feedback, kind of keep all councilup data, any changes that maybe take place, and then decide whether we can do, just a little workshop prior to the next meeting, and we go that way, if that's okay with you guys.
Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Currie and Kevin, for all of our work on the budget. It does look good, the numbers look good. We did have a workshop prior to our meeting last week, so I want to thank you all for what you put into it. Next item, discuss and possibly approve resolution R08-18-02, resolution that the city of Harriman, Tennessee, authorizing the insurance of interest-bearing fire department capital outlay notes, Series 2018, an amount not to exceed $440,000, and providing for the payment of said note.
How I'll spare you reading all the language and this, basically, the resolution provides for an eight-year note at not to exceed 4% per annum. We plan to borrow $439,500 to pay for the fire truck, and we already have obtained interest rates and bond council costs, and we will be purchasing with a loan that has the lowest cost, total cost, city. Basically, the terms of the note are outlined in Section 3, 1, 2, and 3. Section 4 has some language about redemption of the notes. We can't prepay the note without the penalty, but we can make additional principal payments. Section 5, basically, we execute this in the name of the municipality with manual signature of the mayor. And Section 6, city clerk of the municipality is appointed as the note registrar and paying agent. Section 7, basically, it says, transfer of the notes, and has some language associated with that and requirements, regulation for that respect transfers, Section 8. Section 9, should the notes become mutilated, lost, or stolen, destroyed, there's a provision for those notes to be replaced exactly as they were. Section 10, basically, has registrar and title to rights and benefits and security of the resolution. Section Level 11, ad verum taxes are to be used to pay off the debt with property tax. The levy of the taxes will be made by the city, and the approval of this resolution has to be done by the director of state and local programs, and the sale of notes are authorized to be sold by the mayor by informal bid process, and basically, informal bid, you go ahead and determine rates of interest and make a decision on purchase at point rate. Non-arbitrized certification, basically, you're not allowed to borrow money, put it in a bank, and earn more interest than you're paying on it, basically what it means, unless you pay the IRS for the privilege, which is they take it all away. Section 17, they're qualified as exempt notes, you don't have to pay tax, and there are some reimbursement provisions in Section 18, which are important now. The fire truck is basically going to be available on Friday, but I don't think any note can be put in place by then, and the language basically says, if they will not wait, that we basically can go ahead and pay for the fire truck and reimburse ourselves for that payment. So that's what Section 18 is about. This constitutes a contract between the city and no bearer, and no action will be taken about the volition of the notes. Payments that are due on Saturday, Sunday, and holidays will be due the next business day, and that's basically it. So basically, the money will be donated exclusively to the purchase of the fire truck.
Motion to approve resolution R08-18-02. Motion. Second. Motion to councilman Russell, second. Councilman Ayler. Councilman Russell. Yes, sir. Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve Rome County emergency dispatch agreement. That amount for the annual payment is $84,960. Motion to approve. I make the motion. Motion to councilman Johnson.
Sir.
Second. Councilman Holly, councilman Johnson.
Councilman, I have nothing.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for discussion.
How much did it go up this year, Kevin? How much did it go up this year monthly?
Can't pull it off the top of my head.
Two thousand, I think, probably.
It went up a little.
Overall?
Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve Harriman Historical Zone Board appointment.
I'd like to recommend Joshua Plaskin, who lives up on Trent Street, and his wife and kids live up there, a good guy, and he's already volunteered in some aspect of the city, but he was recommended by the chairman of that board, which is Bruce Knoblock, so let's see, I might recommend for council.
Motion. Motion to councilman Ayler, second. Councilman Russell, councilman.
Josh is an excellent appointment to that board, and he's also a fantastic new citizen of Harriman, relatively new, just kind of moved here arbitrarily, brilliant guy, we're lucky to have him.
Councilman Russell.
I've heard very high things of Mr. Plaskin.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes. Motion carries. Last item, discuss and possibly approve the purchase of football jerseys for the recreation department. This is coming from the rec committee. Councilman Russell, do you want to explain this?
Basically, what we have is, these are the jerseys that our kids are playing in right now. Give you another example here. Yeah, I just picked these out of a pile. I didn't find the worst ones. The kids are needing new jerseys, and Director Hitman has asked me to ask the council to approve up to $5,000 to purchase new jerseys for the kids. They are reversible jerseys, so they will have home and away jerseys for, I believe it's 80 kids. Is that, that's what that'll cover? I think we've purchased football helmets for them in the past, and played some pads. They've had these jerseys for about seven years, so that's your lifespan they're getting at.
What's it cost, Mr. Russell?
It's, he asked to have it approved up to $5,000.
You have that in form of a motion?
I make the motion, that we spend up to $5,000 on jerseys.
I second it.
Motion to councilman Russell, second. Councilman Johnson, councilman Russell.
I have nothing else.
Councilman Johnson.
Usually, Baron, Baron at the middle school, every, probably every couple of years, he has to replace his, so that's a good, yeah, they're very old, so they need to be, have some new ones. That's all I've got.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up.
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Motion carries.
It's all on the agenda. I'd like to say that I've been on council for two years here, prior to becoming mayor. I've been the mayor for the last two years, so I've been sitting up here for the last four years, and it has been an honor to have on my right-hand side, councilman Ayler. It is, it makes my job so... It is, it makes my job so much easier when we have councilmen like we do. And Councilman Haver, you've truly been a pillar of the community. You have been a great councilman, a great leader. Councilman Russell put it in empty, good words last council meeting about you. You make it enjoyable to come to the meeting, and we appreciate all you've done. We have a flag for you. I'll make you stand. Says, "With sincere appreciation, Christopher Ailer, on behalf of the mayor, city council, employees, and citizens of the City of Harlem, we want to thank you for your many years of service and dedication to the city, 2018."
Before you sit down, I also have a proclamation. I want to put my glasses back on. Whereas Christopher Ailer was elected to the Harlem City Council in 2012, so in six years, therefore providing Harlem and the council with insight and perspective that otherwise would not have had. And whereas Christopher Ailer served the community and the council through his active participation on the finance board, leaving his creative energy and thoughtful ideas while serving as a committee leader. Whereas Christopher Ailer also served as chairman for the Rome County Board of Commerce from July 2013 to 2014. And whereas Christopher Ailer is a graduate of the leadership of Rome County and graduate of East Tennessee Regional Leadership Association in 2016. And whereas Christopher Ailer was awarded in April 2011 the Paul E. Gilbert Young Professional Award by Rome County Chamber of Commerce. And whereas it is altogether fitting and proper that his service be honored for his hard work and dedication given to the citizens of Harlem by the Harlem City Council. Whereas Christopher Ailer kept observation about people and situations, precise analyst of budgets, and willingness to speak his mind openly has been invaluable to the council. His fellow council members, along with the citizens and employees, will miss Christopher Ailer. Therefore, I, winged best Mayor of Harlem, Tennessee, do hereby honor and thank Christopher Ailer for his outstanding service to the people of Harlem and his willingness to serve the community as elected leader. And we further resolve that Harlem is a better place because of his service. Anyone else have anything they need to come for council? When we adjourn council, we will be swearing in our new council members in the front. When we get done, there's some snacks and things inside the office here that y'all are welcome to, but as soon as we get through adjournment and our meeting, we will go ahead and swear our new councilman in. So you're welcome to stay for that swearing in. Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
Motion, my Councilman Russell, second. Councilman Ailer, admission, thank you. All of you ready?
I raise your right hand.
Hey, buddy. I come just to. I, Sam Russell, do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Tennessee, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Tennessee, and will faithfully and honestly perform the duties of the office of Harlem City Council to the best of my ability, that I have not and will, by holding said office, will not have any direct personal interest in any contract with the city or any department or institution thereof, and that I am not indebted to the state, the county of Rome, or the city of Harlem on account of any lawful taxes against me do now do and unpaid, that I do not owe the city of Harlem any past due and unpaid indebtedness, and that I have not been convicted of any time of my legacies in office, bribery, or any corrupt practices or crimes, and do not stand charged by the Attorney General of Rome County for any account of any alleged offense against the law. So help me God.
All right. You all are councilmen effective September 1st, so you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.